Good afternoon. We'll call the July 6, 2021, closed session meeting to order. Lucinda, would you like care to read the order from Governor Newsom at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. If I get my sticky notes out of the way so I can see this. Governor Newsom proclaimed a COVID-19 state of emergency in March 2020 and issued Executive Order N 2920, which allows local legislative bodies to hold teleconference meetings accessible virtually to council members and the public. The public can access live meetings at fullerton.legistar.com on Cable Channel 3 if you use Spectrum and Cable Channel 99 if you are an AT&amp;T customer. The council chambers will have seating available for the public, and please observe the current health and safety protocols that we have in the chambers. The public may address City Council in person or virtually by joining the Zoom meeting online or by telephone. If you are joining by Zoom, you should go to zoom.us/join. Those who wish to speak via telephone can call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and there are further instructions for participating via Zoom on the agenda for this meeting. If you are speaking in person, you should register at the City Manager's Office front counter, and members of the public may only speak one time during public comments and on each agenda item.
Thank you for that, and can I ask you to call role now, please?
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
President.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Mayor Whitaker and Councilmember Zara are not yet present.
Okay, so we will now move along to public comment on closed session items, and I believe we saw earlier that there was at least one or two people with hands raised online, it looked like, so.
We have one comment. Yes, we're on the right screen. Jane Riefer.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Protam and councilmembers. I wanted to make a comment on Item 3, your conference with a real property negotiator for what I'm commonly calling the hotel at the Fullerton Transportation Center. I just wanted to remind the council that this is a project that is under an exclusive ENA, and I have to say, I'm not very much fond of giving out exclusive ENAs to companies when there are other companies who may have also been interested in the project. And I know that just recently, the council decided to, the council decided regarding the Union Pacific Park issue, there was an exclusive negotiating agreement with a vendor with the farms, and that was, there was a decision made to actually put, essentially put out an RFP, I guess, to find out all the different projects that could possibly be considered for that site. I'd like to see that done in this case. I know you're not really talking about the ENA, but you're talking about a sale, but it seems like other organizations should have an opportunity to give their ideas for a hotel in the area, a project I support, rather than just having one company be able to take a shot at it. So, thank you very much. I hope you'll consider that during your deliberations about a sale of the property.
And those are all the people with the hand raised.
Okay. Well, with that, we will recess to closed session. I call the July 6, 2021, meeting of the Fullerton City Council to order. Madam Clerk, could you please describe what's additionally necessary to our instructions on the agenda as far as how people can participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Governor Newsom proclaimed a COVID-19 state of emergency in March 2020 and issued Executive Order N 2920, which allows local legislative bodies to hold teleconference meetings accessible virtually to council members and the public. The public can find the meetings at fullerton.legistar.com, Spectrum Channel 3, and ATT Uverse Channel 99. We also have seating in the council chamber available for the public. All persons visiting city facilities should observe current health and safety protocols. The public may address the City Council in person or virtually by joining the Zoom meeting online or by telephone. Those joining online should go to zoom.us/join. Those wishing to speak via telephone may call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and there are further instructions, and all of these, all these numbers are on the agenda for this meeting. Just a reminder that anybody who wants to address council can speak one time on each item on the agenda, and those wishing to speak in person should register with this next door at the City Manager's Office front counter.
Thank you, and Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the role?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
President.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
We are privileged this evening to have Pastor Jay Wu of One Life City Church to provide the invocation.
You may have had the wrong name.
Hi.
Hello, I'm Pastor Dwayne Evans.
Thank you for the correction.
Christian Life Center, yeah. Not correcting, just wrong person. Yeah, so I just want to say thank you for being here, and I will just do the invitation, and yes, invocation. Father God, we thank you for this time, and we thank you for this opportunity. Father, I just ask your blessings upon each council member and our mayor of our fine city, that this meeting will just go according to your plan. It will go smoothly, and it will just be what you planned for our fine city. And Father, I thank you for each official that is here, and I just ask your blessing upon this city and all that you have for us, and I thank you in thy name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend, and would you like to give us a few sentences about your church?
Sure. I have been pastoring at Christian Life Center here on 404 Willsure for about three months now, and we are a growing church. We are getting back with this pandemic. We're trying to get back to order and do things back into our community. So you will hear about us very soon because we have an event coming up in October that we always had. It's called the Harvest Celebration, and I would, you will hear more information about that, and I just thank you for this opportunity, yes.
We thank you for all the good that you provide to our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. I'd like to ask everyone to stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked our acting city manager, Steve Danley, to lead that pledge.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And city attorney, do we have a closed session report this evening?
Yes, we do. Yes, sir. Closed session, item number one, City of Fullerton versus Purdue Pharma, LP. The council voted 5-0 to approve Purdue Pharma's bankruptcy plan. Item number two, Conference Legal Counsel, Air Combat USA versus City of Fullerton. The city council voted 5-0 to add to the existing appeal, that is, appeal of rulings for plaintiff's award of attorney's fees and city's request for award of attorney's fees, rulings on, city's request for ruling, ruling on its order for attorney's fees as well. On closed session, item number three, Conference of Real Property Negotiation, the southeast corner of Pomona Avenue and East Santa Fe Avenue in the Fullerton Transportation Center. City Council voted 3-2 to authorize the city manager to execute a non-binding letter of intent for the disposition of development agreement framework, and that ends the reportable actions for closed session.
Thank you. I would ask at this time whether there are ex parte communications between council members to report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation with Representative from Orange County Employee Association. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I also spoke with a member of the Orange County Employee Association.
Seeing no others, we'll move on. There are no presentations this evening, and we're now ready for public comments. I would ask those interested in addressing the council to please address your comments through the chair and maintain good decorum at all times. We will try to do likewise up here on the dais as well. And with that, you have up to three minutes to make your comments. No requirement to use all three minutes, but good evening, welcome.
Bruce, how you doing tonight?
Good.
Craig Sheets, born at St. Jude's, didn't get a chance to elaborate on a Centillion counter, Geiger counter. You guys got hot-shot freight trains going out in front of your city hall here, Police Department, daily. Those are dispatched, those containers come out of the port of Long Beach through LA. Customs checks 3% of 13 to 17 million containers coming in off our ocean. That's 3%, not enough. And they've been x-raying because they're backed up the ships out there. They don't need to be x-raying, they need a Geiger counter on this and a scintillator. That will get through, a scintillator will get through any kind of concealment that that weapon might be in. So, pretty adamant about that. I've got the train on there, and you know, all the links to the containers, and those freight trains aren't called hot shots. Sounds a little bit nuclear to me. Gulf Ocean, another filter for narcotics, cocaine, heroin, AK-47s, which is not our weapon of military choice, I do believe, and as well messing up the ocean if it's a catastrophic hit with these missiles, we won't see rain for years. And, you know, narcotics end up in children's hands. That's pro-choice. We should not be running any pro-choice on kids having a decision on drugs, cocaine and heroin. Who's ever involved in this, they're not adults, and they're not human. And that's back to that cat urine thing I've been talking about, and reptiles, that'd be Vulcan. And then, Mayor, I've left you the urine facts to counterfeit and fraud, and the people behind the drug moving strands of criminal programming is pretty much what it is. And one other thing on the drugs, the one filters, the Gulf Ocean, because they're filled, I mean, if you look it up on the computer, I think there's 38, 124, maybe 100 oil rigs on that ocean. Some of them nonoccupied, and I'm thinking that'd be where some meth labs are going on, and this and that. So, appreciate you letting me speak, and this will be the last. I'm out of here, moving to Idaho. Take care.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jackie Danis, and I have an AV that I have parked.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Yes. The police were down on Walnut again today, checking tires that are marked to see if everyone's moving, and a female officer was checking the marked tires. They arrived one after another, and they targeted a truck hooked up to a trailer. I was speaking to an officer in his car. He was working on a computer. I asked him not to take that person's trailer. We have the same rights as does everyone else. Police officers in the car said that the neighbors were complaining about the parking being used by the AVs. And he said the city wants AVs out. That's discrimination. You don't have the right to treat us like this. The interesting part that I think is on Treslo, between Treslo and Walnut, there's a park, but it's not full of people. It's almost never used because I walk my dogs in that area all the time, and there's really no one there, but there's 36 parking spaces. So you could have 18 motorhomes there and watch them, and nobody's going to tear it up. It's not going to be another Valencia, that was a disaster. But people take care of the things we have, and so far, I think there's eight or nine on Walnut, maybe less, because one left today. So, we just need some help until we get everything straight. Everybody's got an issue, and not everybody can afford it, and the man that was towed today, he has, what, 23 tickets that he has to have paid before he can take them out and get it out of the storage. So, and I could help him with the storage, but I can't do the tickets. I don't have that kind of money. But anyway, he needs help, so please take care of that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker and members of the City Council, Maureen Flynn-Vicera, Fullerton resident. I just want to just express my concern for the precedents that have been set about flying special interest flags and special cause flags that share the flagpole of the American flag. I don't think that's appropriate, and when I was doing some research, there's many, many causes and special interests that, you know, each month, first, you know, cancer awareness, child abuse awareness, suicide prevention, women's, you know, issues, cancer issues, a variety of different issues, children's issues, and I think that that, it's setting a precedence that could be kind of a, not a good precedence, to put it with the American flag, because I think, you know, myself, which I will be doing is bringing, and I'm not sure how a flag gets displayed, but I'd like to propose, you know, a variety of different flags that I'd like to see displayed, but I would ask, though, that they not be displayed or hung with the American flag. I think that what you decided to do, if you decided, or was it members of the council to put it in front of City Hall, I still think it's a bad precedence because you're going to get people coming out of the woodwork that are going to want their flags displayed, and I think that they should, I guess, have a right to do it since we've already set a precedence with the pride flag. But I think having it in front of City Hall was, I guess, appropriate, so I was a little bit disheartened when, I think, by intimidation or, you know, people that are maybe the woke culture, what have you, you know, trying to intimidate the city council into putting it back on the flagpole. I think it could have stayed in front of City Hall where it was, and I commend you for doing that initially, but then I feel that it was intimidation to move it back over to the flagpole. So, I just want to, I do have something I'd like to leave with the city clerk. I just tried to find as many months of different things, and I didn't really have, I mean, there's like multiple things each month, just to kind of give you an idea of what, you know, potentially could be coming forward as far as people expressing, you know, having one, a flag displayed. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
And if we have any other speakers in the chambers that'd like to speak, please line up on the wall, and I believe we have someone already queued up, so you can, one of you can cut in the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Jesse Gennaro. I'm a longtime Fullerton resident, grandparents moving here back in the 30s. I am homeless, and I am one of the people on Walnut Avenue. I'm in the process and was in the process of trying to leave Fullerton after being told to leave Fullerton recently by the police. My vehicle, actually my trailer, was just impounded this evening, this afternoon, and I'm kind of perplexed to the fact that I was able to obtain my 2021 tags, but told that I have over 20 parking violations. The violations themselves are at least a year old, but yet, once again, I was able to obtain my tags. I was told by Brooke Weisman that the tags would be taken care of, and these are all during the COVID lockdown. So I was under the impression as of today that things were taken care of. I've had multiple tag issues, one being that my, in November, my vehicles were impounded wrongly by the Fullerton police, saying that I had stolen my tags. If I had stolen tags on my vehicle, I was to be arrested as a, I was supposed to be arrested, basically, California law, but yet, nothing was ever happened. I got a letter from the DMV saying they greatly apologize, they issued my tags incorrectly, but yet my tags were back-to-back sequential, and the numbers matched my 2019 registration. I'm perplexed, okay? I got the letter from the DMV stating they apologize, but getting interim, I've had nothing but harassment, coercion from the police, saying if you don't move, you're going to be arrested, you don't leave. Like I said, today, my tags, my vehicle was impounded, and that's everything I own inside, everything. I'm, I don't know what to do. I'm on this, like I say, I have a planning, a leaving date of July 19th to move to Maryland to my sister's house, which, talking with Don from The Rock, Donna Verdott from The Rock, we were trying to get things to go. But every time I start two steps forward, I get pushed backwards by the Fullerton police. They came to me on a Wednesday, tried taking my trailer for being 72-hour violation. Well, I was unable to move my truck and trailer because when you folks impounded it, you shorted the main wire harness, and it took me months to get, be able to work on it, because every time I looked at it, I would get mad. That was, so Wednesday, they come try and take it for 72-hour violation. They come on Friday to try to take it for inoperable vehicle. Click, 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 boom, here you go, guys. They go to the next motorhome. I watched them break into the guy's motorhome. Nobody was there. They broke into it, tried impounding it. They come on Monday, speaking with the watch commander Friday evening, he goes, your tags are expired. I said, yeah, I know, just 10 days. I have somebody helping me with my tags. They come Monday, want to take my vehicles because of expired tags. So each time, I've been able to let go, but now they came today and took my trailer because of the multiple tickets. Like I said, if I had multiple tickets, how was I able to get my 2021 tags for the vehicle? And these were, I was under the impression, were taken care of by Brooke with the Old York View Slough Center. But I have no money, no way of getting my possessions back, all my tools, my clothes, I have on what you see. I have my rottweiler with me, and I just don't know what to do.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I've been a Fullerton resident. I want to speak in support of the IT consent calendar item. It's a hefty price, but we need solid protection. Often, people don't think of IT as infrastructure and only think of our roads as the only issues we have, but like other city services, IT is crucial, especially to our public safety in our modern age. Imagine our water systems being hacked, for example. I want to thank Chief Dunn, who has been the de facto head of IT on top of his normal duties and doing a fine job. There is another example of why this new council majority should stop talking about deeper cuts, trying to solve our problems with only cuts or just soundbites for politicians like this council majority, who will tell you what you want to hear so they can get elected, but in reality, they are compromising our safety, our services, and the integrity of our city, especially when there is little left to cut. Oh, but you try to sneak special perks for yourselves like private offices without the public knowing, and yet we're still waiting to fix our roads. Tick tock.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I hope all of you have a wonderful Independence holiday with your families and loved ones. What a difference makes from last year to this year to enjoy our families and friends and be together, and so happy for that. First of all, I would like to congratulate our police department, our fire department, because they did an amazing job. Last year, it was very, very loud, and this year, we can, we were able to sleep after enjoying with our families and friends. Thank you so much for the great job to our public safety in our city, and I would like to invite all of you, we're going to have a march in our city with the police department because we have crime. We always receive calls, people, you know, they have break the windows and the properties garage, and we're going to have a march on Richmond Park. We're not apart from Richmond Park, we're going to go around in our neighborhood, and this is, you know, welcome to all of you because we're all neighbors to join us in this celebration of peace and unity, because we consider safety for all of us a priority. And I have a question for all of you. With the ending of the emergency, the, is in the consent calendar, I would like, please, if you guys can extend, we finishing this local emergency affect our reimbursement and receiving new funds? Other cities have done this. I would like if you can please explain a little bit more, because I don't comprehend a lot of members of our community either. This is item number three in the consent calendar, and I just congratulate all of you for the great job that you guys always do, keeping us together and working together for working. For this working, we are so grateful for our Chief Dunn and the police department, and for John Bowery and the Neighborhood Watch that we are creating to reduce crime in our neighborhoods. This is something that we cannot achieve alone. We have to work together and keep our families safe. We have a lot of crime, but the power of our community is greater. Thank you so much, and thank you for, many organizations, they always put an effort in what is a community and working together and putting first our neighbors and families and children, and this is what make our city of Fullerton so strong. Thank you so much, and I wish you a wonderful month. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers in the chamber, do we have Zoom callers?
I see two hands raised in Zoom, and Jane Riefer, you are unmuted.
Great, thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I have four quick things. The first thing is that I'm delighted to hear the attorney reporting out what happened at closed sessions so that we can know some of the decisions that we're able to hear about, and I hope that this is a new, a new procedure or method of doing this. It was great to hear that, because, you know, we look at that, we wonder what's going on, and then to hear what happened is just fantastic. Thank you for doing that. Number two, I wanted to mention the, that there, I'm just at the last minute not remembering the titles, but there is a survey for people to take about walking conditions in downtown Fullerton, and I'm mentioning it now because I'm hoping that people who don't have access to the internet will be able to come into City Hall and pick up copies of this survey and walking audit, so they can then note down in hard copy what they're, what they see as places where walking works and where walking doesn't and so forth. So just wanted to announce that, and if someone has the actual name of that, I'll appreciate it because it's slipping my mind right now. And then just the last two things are, could we pull Items 2 and 3 from the consent calendar? One is the legislative platform, and one is the local emergency termination, and thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
And Tanya McRory, I am unmuting you, and go ahead and talk.
Good evening, council. Tanya McRory, Fullerton resident, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Just wanted to take a moment and share an experience I had in Phoenix. My sister and her family left California and moved to Phoenix a couple of years ago, and my parents followed soon after, so I've been spending some time there, and my parents expressed interest in becoming involved in their local city council and asked if I could help them kind of get started. So in researching for them, I came to discover that each Phoenix City Council member is paid $65,000 a year, which I know is a lot more than any of you are paid. They also have their own offices with a paid full-time staff member. Given all of that support, they still not manage to open council chambers for council meetings. So even though I was able to fly to Phoenix on a jam-packed plane and sit in overcrowded sports bars, it's apparently still unsafe to sit in chambers. They also have their public comment at the end of their meeting, and you have to fill out a card one hour prior to the meeting to even get, make a comment. Worst of all, their meetings are at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Wednesday, so they have literally gone above and beyond to make sure that their constituents do not engage in their democracy, do not have access to their local officials, and do not have information, basically, of what's going on in their city. I think it's ridiculous, it's elitist, and I think it's bad governance. So I just wanted to come here tonight and say how much I truly appreciate each -- So I just wanted to come here tonight and say how much I truly appreciate each and every one of you for showing up in person for little to no pay, for being accessible to your constituents. And I, you know, many of you know me, there's been many times when I have not agreed with some of your decisions, but not only can I freely address the council in public comment, but I also believe that if I felt really strongly about an issue, that each and every one of you would likely meet with me in person. You know, I just, that's really something. And sometimes you don't know what you've got till it's gone. So I just wanted to take a moment and, and really, truly thank you. I consider it a blessing to be able to engage in my local politics and, and hopefully make a difference in my community. So thank you for your service, and thank you for making it easy to be part of this council and these meetings. That's all I got.
Thank you.
And we have one more hand raised. LM, you are unmuted.
Hi, good evening, this is Munish calling. I wanted to, first of all, say happy after Fourth of July to everybody who's there tonight. But I also wanted to discuss a little bit the fact that at this time in history, there's so much focus on the things that divide us. We see a lot of attention put on everything from certain qualifiers, adjectives, descriptors, and whatnot. I myself am an immigrant, born in India, but have grown up as an American, and I consider myself an American of Indian descent. Our community at this point in history has so many competing interests and so many people that are looking to be recognized for who they are, and they rightfully should. But I believe the role of government is to unite people. And the way that's done is not only through our interpersonal behavior with the public, but also with our interpersonal behavior amongst each other. One of the other major ways that that takes place is by having things that bring us together as a community. I think one of the big failings that this year has been failing to have something as simple as fireworks on Fourth of July. That community event brings so many people together, so many families together. I myself have been going for over ten years and love getting out there and seeing the rest of the community out there with family members, pets, and whatnot. I would beseech the council to consider not only making sure that event goes off next year, but, but creating other events and refunding events that bring our community together, and hopefully do so in a spirit where our council not only works together, but works with the various parts of our community that are out there. Thank you.
And I see no more hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, with that, I will bring the discussion to council and staff communication. Mr. Acting City Manager, probably nothing to respond to on that, or do you have something?
Not to respond to that, but I just wanted to bring forward a little good news. Next council meeting will be coming to you, and we have a, a projection that we're gonna end the last fiscal year with a four-point-four million dollar surplus fund balance available. So that's good news for everybody, and-
Welcome news.
Yes.
Thank, thank you for that. Before we leave you or the rest of the staff as well, I didn't know it's pretty early, just a couple of days after the Fourth of July celebration, but is there any level of data or any instances, incidents that anyone cares to report or comment on?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As far as the fire department is concerned, we did work collaboratively with our, our police department, and as far as fires are concerned, we had nothing of circumstance to report. Structure fires or injuries related to fireworks that have come in yet, obviously it's still very early, we're trying to gather all of our information. But we do believe that between the social media presence and the actual presence of our, our fire units out there in our different neighborhoods, that it had some level of effect on how the night went, people feeling safe, able to use the safe and sane fireworks in the areas that they were able to use them in, and hopefully limiting the, or having people think twice about using illegal fireworks anywhere within our city. The high fire severity zones that we did patrol in, preliminary results or reports were that that was very quiet, which is fantastic to hear. We do know their northern part of the state and even northern part of LA County and the high desert's been very hot and dry. So anything we can do to, to mitigate that, we'll definitely take a stand on that. So it sounds like so far it was a successful Fourth of July from the fire standpoint.
Thank you, Chief, that's good to hear.
Mr. Mayor, from the PD side, we, we responded about one hundred and sixty-seven calls while we had the additional resources in to respond solely to those calls, so that was between the hours of about six PM and about three AM, which is down from last year. And I would say the complaints as a whole are down from last year. I think I only got one email after the Fourth, and last year I got dozens, so I take that as positive news. And the other thing that I think that was incredibly positive about this year is a collaboration between police and fire. Our fire partners, if we did confiscate illegal fireworks, would meet us in the field and take them for us so our officers could go about confiscating more or responding to more calls. So that worked out really well and improved our efficiency immensely.
Thank you, Chief. Good news from everyone here. Any other members of staff have?
Well, just to highlight, the survey we're doing is downtown Fullerton on the go. And if you cannot go online and do the audit, we do have copies here at our, at the front desk.
Great, thank you for the information. With that, then, we'll bring the discussion to the council. Does anyone care to lead off? No. I, Councilmember Jung flagged me first here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council. We all recently had the opportunity to celebrate this nation's birth. While it's, appreciating this country's freedom and independence is valuable to us all, it's important to recognize that freedom and choice are not always equitable, that oftentimes things like skin color, gender influence the capacity and enjoy those benefits fully. So I want to thank the President for signing the bill, making Juneteenth a national holiday, acknowledging past wrongdoings or injustice is a step to greater accountability and only furthers our collective quest to aspire to be a better America. Also want to thank the President for increasing the important child tax credit as part of the American Rescue Plan. The delivery of these funds are scheduled to begin this month, and as an opportunity to be a lifeline for working families. This is real money, and it'll help families with childcare, so mothers can return to the workforce and meet the necessary demands of our continued economic recovery. I'd also like to thank our state Senator Josh Newman for bringing home nearly thirty million dollars in this year's budget to fund efforts to purchase West Coyote Hills. Elections matter, electing officials who, who are invested in doing the work rather than taking false credit on social media matters even more. With accountability in mind, I caution some who may be misled and are mistaking that governing is a greater than or less than proposal. Unscrupulous politicians will indeed frame the false narrative that way, that if this is funded, that will not be. But I can assure you, the better approach is an equal sign, or that an action or an inaction will cause an effect. By maintaining a moniker of large-scale fiscal responsibility, which previous councils have not always been focused on, there is an effect that's beneficial long-term for our city and its residents, even if it is painful in the short term. While there's no roadmap in Fullerton's governance for fiscal responsibility, the challenges we face together now would have been mitigated for certain if they were addressed head-on decades ago. Because understandably, hope is not a plan. As my fellow councilman to my left so wisely put it a few meetings ago, debits have to equal credits. Sadly, there are politicians that would rather sow seeds of discourse and discontent rather than govern. But this is the misunderstanding of labeling elected office as oftentimes a part-time job. It's disrespectful to those who want to do the job of the people and do it well on their behalf. All of us here are fighting to change the working order of this city with the residents in mind, and that ship doesn't always right itself in a timely manner we all wish it to be. Another word of caution about water usage as well, the entire southwest region of our country is in a historic mega drought. Lake Mead, which provides water for forty million Americans living in California, Nevada, and Arizona, is now at critical lows. Indeed, the federal government is expected to declare the first-ever water shortage of the Colorado River this year, which will begin impacting residents in Arizona and Nevada next year, who will receive automatic cuts in water. I urge our city residents to begin serious conservation measures, as water is life for us all. Lastly, a word about what is to come. There's a strong likelihood that Congress will pass a core part of the President's ambitious infrastructure plan in the coming weeks. That will result in a possible building material supercycle with demand certainly outpacing supply on everything from lumber, cement, steel, and gravel. The cement industry already is at ninety percent capacity in this country, and with China's highly motivated Belt and Road Initiative, importing cement will be a cost prohibitive. A building material shortage in a large capital investment firms like Blackstone leveraging more and more of their portfolio into residential real estate at the tune of over sixteen billion dollars will make certain that it eclipses the capacity of average citizens in our community to be able to purchase a starter home. The thirty percent average increase in home prices will make affordability more challenging for my sons and my daughters than it was for me. It will be in our collective best interest as a council and a staff to work in concert with our community partners, responsible developers, and progress projects forward in a timely manner, because while time is money to development, now materials will be as well. If I may, Mr. Mayor, let's get to work. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem.
Thank you. So a couple of things, I guess to sort of piggyback on Councilmember Jung's comments related to roads and streets. It's a, in the past six months, I've probably gotten four to six emails or calls each week from a frustrated resident, sometimes a constituent, related to road repairs that they would like done in their neighborhoods. You know, and often the question is, hey, how can, how can we advance this if we get petitions, or if we get signatures signed by neighbors? If we put together a petition, will that help? The reality is, funding will help, and I think there's probably no better time in recent years than right now where we've seen both a federal and state stimulus. While some of this money's been issued, some of it is, is yet to come, I, I wanted to sort of reassure and, and make the community aware that we've begun having discussions, both with our elected representatives, you know, both in DC and also here in, in California. Because the reality is, we're gonna have to be aggressive to compete both for the funding and for the earmarks. And so, you know, the city's legislative advocate who works on our behalf to obtain grant funding and also other funding is aggressively pursuing those. We've tasked them with bringing back options because we want to be competitive for each and every dollar that's allocated towards road and street repairs. Additionally, and as the direction becomes final on some of the ARPA funding that is available now and that we have already received, if it were up to me, every penny of that money would be spent on our roads and streets, but I didn't write the legislation. And so, you know, the, the reality is, we have control over very little of that and what can be done. But we understand that there could potentially be a formula that would allow for up to six million dollars of that funding to be spent on our roads and streets, in which case, as soon as we find that out, I will be making a motion to put that right in, you know, to make that investment right into our roads and streets. And so, that's, hopefully, that will come up sooner than later. It was announced a couple of weeks ago that an agreement was imminent, then of course they kind of walked that back, and so, you know, we're, we're sort of at their mercy until that gets finalized. Having said that, I wanted to touch on one other item. Have had some concerns brought forward related to short-term rentals and licensing and taxes, I guess, that are being charged. Yeah, this was an item that was approved, and I've talked to Director Fritzl about this. She's been very helpful, I think, getting to some of the applicants, but I guess what we understand is that residents, residents who had, I guess, tried to sign up for a short-term rental license, were forced to pay penalties and back taxes and other things on, you know, stays or charges that may have not been, in fact, been incurred. And so there's a process to, I guess, refund some of those penalties and payments, and so wanted to remind the public or make the public aware that that's something that will be happening. Last, certainly not least, it's July, which means that Little League baseball season is in the All-Star tournament, and so I'd like to congratulate our All-Stars from East Fullerton, West Fullerton, and Golden Hill Little Leagues, and would like to wish the best of luck to East Fullerton and Golden Hill, who are still actively competing for, you know, a potential championship. And so we often look at Fullerton as the education community, but many of us also revere Fullerton as a baseball community as well, and so would like to send good luck to, to all our kids that are competing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro tem. Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, to piggyback on the diamond, our girl softball teams are very competitive and very successful, too. There's a couple who won the region and are moving on into state and others, so we'll wish them well as well. And I just wanted to thank the chief. I did see an officer in a traffic motorcycle patrolling the streets for the July, looking to see if any one of our residents was fired on illegal fireworks, so thank you for that. And, and from what I understand, we are gonna be having our Fourth of July fireworks show next year. So we're looking forward to coming back and hanging out at the stadium and then, and celebrating the, our Independence Day. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we'll pass it along.
Thank you. Councilmember Zara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to just thank our, our staff, our police department and our fire department for all the work they did for, on, on the Fourth of July and the days before. I think the, the efforts of, of, the preventative efforts and the messaging and the coordination that we had this year was definitely very, very effective, even though I know my cats were still quite terrified and, and, you know, especially towards the evening, but still much better than last year, for sure. And I kept them company that night. But I also want to thank the, the, all the ladies that joined me to clean up our park, our neighborhood park, Woodcrest, on the, the third. So it's kind of in the spirit of, of public duty, we all went out and, and cleaned up the park and in preparation for our Fourth celebration. So thank you all, and I want to give a shout out to Iglat Nunsi out there in the back. Hello, Iglat, thank you for helping me organize this and putting, you know, getting the word out so quickly. But during the cleanup of the park, we did see quite a bit of bottles and glass and, and even a little bag of white powder, which we don't know what that is. I, I encourage our community to please keep our, our parks clean. Kids play there, families and, and people with their, with their pets go out and, you know, walk their dogs and enjoy these parks, so please keep them clean. And we do have a, an adopt a park program, so if you want to adopt one of your neighborhood parks, if you're an organization, please contact our, our city. It's a great way to bring the community together and, and do something really productive, and it's, and it's also a good exercise, even though I think we did have donuts, which I think negated the, the exercise. But thank you very much, and it was, it was a lovely Fourth of July weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, I do also want to thank our fire department and police department and all other members of our administration who helped to set the table for a very safe Fourth of July. It's always something to be concerned about. I think there was much good planning that went into play, and I do believe that this year was much more successful than maybe the last few years have been. I live on the south part of town, and our neighbors to the south Anaheim were quite active, and in our areas, it was quite active. It was quite noisy as well, both with safe and sane and illegal fireworks. However, the next morning, went out early for an exercise walk, and I was amazed how everything was cleaned up. I, I thought that we'd see all manner of debris on streets and in cul-de-sacs and in yards, and it just wasn't the case. It was fairly amazing. So I think it was a successful celebration, and especially so because I know of no real major injuries or incidents. Nothing has been reported at this stage. So I think that's a success to everyone who worked to make it that way. As was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Jung, we are in a very dry year at this point. And so from OCWD, the Orange County Water District, our groundwater regulator, I want to at least highlight a success, which is we have the first operating installed and started operation on June thirtieth of the Chem 1A water filtering facility to remove PFAS and PFOS. That's per and polyfluoroctal substances, that's PFOS, and then perfluoroctane sulfonate. And so those two substances need to be removed from our water. The national experts on this have reduced the amount of acceptable- The national experts on this have reduced the amount of acceptable PFOS-PFAS in our drinking water to a few parts per trillion. And that's like one drop. We have our Independence Pool, Independence Park Pool, which is an Olympic-sized pool. It's like one drop of PFOS in 20 Olympic-sized pools. So, when you get to a few parts per trillion, it's a very exacting thing even to measure. But we do have, in Orange County, the first active filtering facility. It began on, as I said, June 30th. And it removes those contaminants from the water basin which underlies north and central Orange County. This basin provides approximately 75% of Fullerton's drinking water, of all the fresh water delivered to each ratepayer. What I'd like to do is at least notify staff that at our next meeting, which will be July 20th, I would like to invite and have a presentation from Gina Ayala and/or other persons from OCWD to provide an informative report on the Chem 1A facility and the prospect for removing these substances from our area. We've been fortunate to have only one well taken out of service as a result of this at this point. For comparison, Yorba Linda has 13 wells. They all were removed because of this substance. So, what we're working on is, it's purifying up to 30, sorry, 3,000 gallons per minute. And then, that's being put back into the basin. But at our next meeting, two weeks from now, we'll hear from officials at OCWD at our regular council meeting. It can be either an agendized item or a presentation at your discretion. And with that, I think that we're ready to consider, actually, we have an appointment on the agenda for Councilmember Fred Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The appointment is for the Planning Commission. It's a direct appointment of mine, and I'm appointing Mr. Arnold Dino. And thank him for his service in advance. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other action required?
Ratification by the council, motion and second.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on that.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye. And congratulations to Mr. Dino.
And just a notice that in advance, we will be having a vacancy on the INRAC, which I can never remember what it stands for, but keep an eye out for that notice.
And with that, we can take a look now at our consent calendar, which includes items number one through eight.
And then, there was a request to pull two and three.
Okay.
Right? So, we're...
I would move the consent calendar if there's no other...
Well, there was a request, and I'd like to just request we pull two and three at the speaker's request, just to keep it consistent.
Done. Okay. So, with that, we'll consider the balance.
I'll second the balance or move the balance.
Okay, and you already moved?
Already moved, yeah.
Okay. So, move there, second over here, and roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
The balance passes unanimously.
So, item number two. Not sure, who was it that made that request?
Ms. Jane Riefer.
Ah, Jane, okay.
Is she on Zoom?
Well, we can have whoever is selected from staff here. I see three different possibilities. Yes, Vanessa.
Would you like me to do a full run-through about what the legislative platform is or...
This is the...
I can just have questions?
This is the one on the local agency termination, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, there was two, was it, no, two was the legislative platform. Is Mrs. Riefer on there to see what questions she had? If she's not, then I'll move the items.
I have no hands raised in Zoom at the moment, but the public has a comment on item two. Now's the time. Ah, there, I stalled long enough. Her hand is up whenever you're ready for it. Jane Riefer, the mic is yours.
I believe that's changed, and we can hear it now? We can discuss it now?
Yep. All yours, Jane.
Great. So, on the legislative matrix, thank you for pulling this. And I am very pleased to see that the SB 9 is included as an oppose. I know the Democratic Party is actually now opposing it, which is interesting. And because it appears to be putting in duplexes where single-family home zones are now, but it actually allows six, six units on every current single-family home property throughout the entire state of California, which is about 7 million homes, with a couple of exceptions. And then, that's by right. And then, I believe that to build the other two that are allowed, that would be a decision that goes to planning and council, depending on which city it is. So, the part that I'm most concerned about is that this will then turn, turn single-family home neighborhoods, including the ones that are affordable, because we do have in Southern California, affordable homes, affordable single-family home zones. It'll, in order to do that level of construction, you would need larger loans than most families can handle. And so, I think this will open up our neighborhoods to speculators that will buy up lots of neighborhoods, and the idea of homeownership will disappear in our city and others throughout the state. I would also like to ask if the, if the council would consider adding SB 10 as an oppose. It's a very similar measure, and it allows between 10 to 14 apartment units to be built in single-family, on single-family home lots. And I know at least the 10 is by right, and the setback is about four feet from neighbors on either side. And this is really the end of single-family homes throughout zoning throughout the state of California. I'm hoping people understand what a big change this is. I believe in affordable housing, but I believe this opens our neighborhoods up to speculators, and I don't think that the houses will remain affordable. There's actually no, there's nothing in the legislation to decree that these will be at an affordable level. So, these are some huge problems. This is the end of single-family home zoning in the state. I do not like to, what's that word, be alarmist when it's not necessary, but in this case, this is accurate. So, thank you very much. I hope you can add SB 10 to oppose as well.
Thank you, Ms. Riefer.
Which is being heard on the, I'm sorry, which is being heard on the floor this week.
Okay, before I commented, I did want to make sure we didn't have someone else hanging. One of the concerns, one of our principles in terms of our approach to the legislative platform, is that we maintain more local control. And unfortunately, both of these pieces of prospective legislation would effectively remove control of those areas completely. It would be by right, and these items wouldn't be appearing before your Planning Commission or your City Council. So, as a result, there are very many cities in the state of California that do oppose this legislation as well. But thank you, Ms. Riefer, appreciate your input. And with that, I would accept...
I'll move the item.
I'll move the item, second.
Moved and seconded, and roll call.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Abstain.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Item passes four to one abstention.
And item number three was also pulled, and Chief Loser involved in local emergency termination of this action.
And I think Ms. Nunti, did you have a question, Ms. Nunti regarding item three?
An explanation about...
It was, I think it was whether it affects funding that may have been or will be received.
Okay. I think the chief can explain that.
Yeah, that's correct. We did consult with the Orange County Operational Area, which ours is the emergency management for all of Orange County, who works with and is tied tightly to FEMA as far as reimbursement. That's one of our major concerns. By termination, terminating this emergency declaration, it does not put us at any risk of receiving any reimbursements to anything related to the coronavirus emergency. It is important for us to make sure we, we hold that proclamation on a high, high standard. We have mitigated the emergency as it stands, and per direction of the governor, we are able to sit here today the way we are. And so, it's at our best interest to terminate that at this time.
Great. Thank you, chief. I would entertain a motion on this.
You do have one Zoom comment on this item.
Okay, great.
Oh, actually, two. Someone else raised their hand. Jane Riefer? If I didn't double-click, hang on. Now, you should be able to talk.
Okay, great. Single-click.
Sorry about that.
Perfect. No, no, no problem at all. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak or ask again, and it's Jane Riefer. And on this, I had heard that there may be some question about the council needing to declare whether attending council meetings and giving comment by Zoom will still be will still be allowed. And if that's the case, I would love for that to be addressed so that we'll know whether we can participate by phone and by Zoom. Thank you.
Everything I've read on that suggests that it's up to the City Council. It's at their discretion.
At least at this point, we haven't discussed changing that at all at this stage. I don't know whether anything is forever, but that's our intent right now.
The executive order that allows City Council to meet via Zoom or some sort of telecommunications platform is in place until September 30th. However, public participation via Zoom is not covered, not restricted under the Brown Act, so that could continue should council want to do that. And you have one more speaker. Tanya, if I only click once, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Tanya McCorry again. Sounds like this is already moving forward, but I just, I was just informed recently that pursuant to California Health and Safety Code 101080, the City Council is required under law to terminate the local health emergency at the earliest possible date. And the law does not allow for a governing board to extend the local health emergency for convenience, funding, or waiting on the governor's actions, or for any other reason. So, I would really support ending the state of emergency. There's been, in my opinion, a lot of government overreach under this umbrella, and I think it's time to be leaders in this way and go ahead and end it, which I'm hoping tonight will happen. So, thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments, and is that it?
No more comments.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move the item.
I'll move the item if there's no...
Moved and seconded.
Second.
We're ready.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
A resounding aye.
Passes resoundingly unanimously.
And that completes our consent calendar this evening. We have two public hearings next on the docket. There's item number nine, which is Conditional Use Permit and Development Agreement for a freeway-oriented electronic billboard located at 303 North Placentia Avenue. And I was going to ask, before we got into it, we did have a small amendment as relates to this item. It's a, it would be item 8.3, which, in which we have inserted a sentence in the very beginning, which says, "In the event city staff determines that there is a reasonable basis to conclude that there is insufficient evidence of good faith compliance with the terms of the agreement." And that is the sentence which was added to. The rest of the text, I think, is unchanged.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mary Beth Tinio, Senior Planner. The project before you is a request by General Outdoor Advertising for a Conditional Use Permit and Development Agreement to locate a freeway-oriented electronic billboard within Fullerton. Just by way of background, the City Council adopted the freeway-oriented billboard ordinance back in August 2020 to allow consideration of these types of signs along the 57 and 91 freeways. As part of the ordinance, review procedures were included, which required Planning Commission recommendation and City Council approval of a development agreement and Conditional Use Permit. The ordinance also limited the types of zones that these signs could go in, provided physical site requirements and operational requirements. Since its adoption, this is actually the first application under the ordinance. In terms of a little bit of a timeline of kind of the steps that we got here, on May 26, the Planning Commission considered the item and unanimously approved the project, five zero. As part of that recommended approval, the Planning Commission did add a condition which required the billboard to operate under a valid and current development agreement at all times, and that was included as condition three in your resolution. Then, here we are today on July 6 with the council considering the item, and then subsequent to this, should the item move forward, prior to any issuance of permits, the applicant is required to provide approvals and documentation from the OC Flood Control District and Caltrans. The project is proposed at 303 North Placentia Avenue, which is east of the 57 freeway, west of Placentia Avenue, south of Chapman. The site is zone GC, general commercial, and has a general planned land use designation of commercial, and is also part of the educational focus area. Adjacent uses include a liquor store and gas station to the north, commercial usage such as the car wash and McDonald's to the east, which is also the city of Placentia, and office uses, I'm sorry, and the freeway and flood control channel to the south and west. This specific request is to allow for a freeway-oriented electronic billboard within the existing parking lot at the subject site, as you see on your screen. The billboard will replace an existing light standard on the site and won't remove any parking or landscaping, nor does it affect any of the existing businesses on-site or in the surrounding area. The proposed billboard is about 66 feet and 6 inches in overall height, and will have two electronic display faces in a V-shaped configuration, and each display face is 14 feet by 48 feet, which is the typical. To provide some additional site context of this specific location, this is a street view. What you can see in this side, it demonstrates approximate heights of the existing building, the existing light pole that it will replace, and it also shows you where the site sits approximate to the freeway, and it shows that freeway grade separation, that the freeway sits a little bit higher than the site, and it's about 20 feet above the property. As you can see, the billboard does feature a modern design with blue, white, and orange accents as a nod to the surrounding college area, and provides city identity along the top of the sign, as well as the city logo on the support structure. The additional views of the billboard demonstrate how bracing and internal wiring will be screened along that east elevation, and the pole itself will be wrapped with a streamlined-designed base to match the, the display faces. This is an elevation of the sign along the freeway, as well as demonstrating visibility of the sign along the freeway heading north. The slide demonstrates the approximate distance of the freeway, roadbed to the bottom of the sign, which is about 30 feet, as you see out there on the screen. The overall height and distance between the freeway and roadbed to the bottom of the sign is consistent with other billboards in the area, and I'll share a few elevations of those in the next slides. So, in terms of existing billboards within the area, there are two located within the vicinity. West of the freeway, there are two billboards for Cal State Fullerton, and two located on the east side of the freeway, which is within the city of Placentia. Should be noted that the second Placentia billboard is not shown here, as it's over 3,000 feet away from this proposed billboard. This slide depicts the various approximate distances from the freeway the existing billboards are located. Key to point out is the distance for the proposed Fullerton billboard is slightly farther from the freeway travel lanes than the existing locations at Cal State Fullerton and Placentia. And because of that distance, sometimes the heights vary, so... This slide demonstrates the various heights of the existing billboards, which range from 60 to 68 feet. 60 to 68 feet. The proposed project is within that range and proposes an overall height of 66 feet and 6 inches. So as part of the conditional use permit review, the code does require a number, number of physical and site requirements to consider the billboard. This table outlines basically where it meets or exceed those standards. In terms of operational requirements, those have been memorialized within the development So in addition to the conditional use permit, the code also requires review and approval of a development agreement with the criteria shown before you on the screen. I'll go through them real quickly. So with respect to number one, the DA does provide an exhibit to memorialize the architectural features in the design. With respect to number two, the applicant proposes to provide an annual public benefit fee of $75,000 or 12% of the gross receipts generated, less agency commission or whichever is greater. With respect to the next bullet, the applicant has agreed to provide up to an eight-second public service message per minute on a continuous basis. And for, in terms of maintenance, the applicant is required to repair and improve the sign in accordance with the code, and in addition, graffiti will be removed within 48 hours of notification. Lastly, the applicant has agreed to provide area within the structure to provide conduit for potential future CCTV capabilities for public safety if needed. So in conclusion, the proposed project does meet all development standards and findings as outlined in your draft resolutions and ordinance for both the conditional use permit and the development agreement. As a note, the applicant has requested minor amended language, as Mayor Whitaker mentioned, with regards to annual review and provided to council. The city attorney prepared that language, and the applicant has concurred. So staff recommends approval of the project, as well as find the project is categorically exempt from CEQA per sections 15303 and 15332. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, as well as applicant and property owner here.
Thank you for the report, and I'm sure it's coincidental that these are Cal State University Fullerton colors displayed on the sign, right?
It's college area, so.
Well, actually, I was gonna ask, if you don't mind, I had a question kind of along the lines.
Yes, any questions right now before I open the public hearing for public comment? Anything the council has?
Sure. So, sure, it looks great on a logo, on a baseball uniform or a sports uniform, 76 logo, I guess, is right there. There's a sign that's also visible, but, I mean, were they okay with the blue and orange? Because there's no official affiliation. I mean, do they have latitude to change those colors if they'd like? Or is that, okay.
It, it would be up to council, yeah. The design would be approved by the council, so they have latitude to change it.
Okay.
It was just a nod to the area.
Gotcha. I just, I don't know that that would need to come back to, I mean, that seems kind of silly to me that to change the color of a sign, it would have to come back to us.
Sure.
So perhaps we could, if they're okay with that, I mean, are they okay?
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Any other questions right now at this stage? If not, I will open the public hearing and request individuals wishing to speak to this item to come forward.
And if anybody would like to speak on this item, just line up on the wall on the, here, and whoever's closest can go ahead and get started.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. My name is Tim Lynch. I'm with General Outdoor Advertising. Obviously, I am the applicant. First, I want to thank your staff. This project's taken a little time, and we appreciate the efforts that they have made to do a lot of work and, and a lot of effort, and they've been very willing to communicate with us, and I, I do appreciate that. That isn't always the case with staff when it comes to billboards. Also, I'd like to point out that I like to identify our signs as city identification-type billboards. We, we work with cities all over Southern California, and all of them identify the cities and provide public services to cities, including amber alerts whenever they're required in the area. We work directly with the people in DC. They send us artwork, amber alerts go up. All other advertising is preempted for two hours unless the amber alert is solved before that. So we, we pride ourselves in working with the communities and, and offering, offering a lot of public service announcements. I appreciate the fact that this language was changed just recently. We kind of thought it was a little onerous to every year come back and have a meeting with the city council to be sure we're living up to our commitments. It is a contract. We do abide by our contracts. That's the nature of our company, is a family-owned business, and we always have, so I appreciate that change. There was one other issue on page 15, right at the beginning of item eight. There is a question regarding reasonable fees regarding the, the annual report. Of course, the word reasonable is awfully subjective. I'm wondering if staff could give me a little more clarification on what that might mean. We do provide many cities with annual reports. They're very, very detailed. You have to realize when you're doing a digital billboard, you can have as many as 13 different accounts on it any given time. We sell contracts for as little as a day, so in one year, we will have hundreds of contracts on one sign. So the reports are very detailed with a lot of work and effort put in, and everything is spelled out very clearly and very neatly, and we've been doing this for over a decade now, and we have yet to have any issues with any cities. However, we are more than happy to provide as much information as any city would like to make sure we're living up to our commitments. That's what we do. So I want to thank you, and again, thanks to staff, because this has been a lot of work to get this, to this point.
Thank you, and I, I have just a couple of short questions for you. More than a decade ago, when I served on the Fullerton Planning Commission, there was much concern and consternation about the distracting impact of electronic billboards at that time, and much concern about excessive brightness, too many lumens, or other displays that could distract drivers. I'm sure that you may be questioned on that. What is your, in a nutshell, what's your answer to that?
Well, that, when the digital billboard business first came into fruition, really about, about 12, 15 years ago, that was an issue, and there were issues with brightnesses, and it's taken the industry a number of years to finally resolve those issues. So all of these digital billboards have automatic dimming, lighting controls at all times, so we stay within the boundaries that, that they're called the Lighting Engineers of America that have come up with some guidelines, and we use those guidelines. And I think the guidelines are in the, the development agreement as, as required by the National Institute of Lighting Engineers. Also, I would like to point out that although digital billboards are relatively new, that the fact is auto malls for years have been using electronic signs without any controls, and, and, and there's not, never been any correlation with distracted driving with any of those signs at any time. So, so it's, the CHP has also done a number of surveys regarding electronic signs, and they have yet to come a correlation with any traffic issues regarding electronic signs.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Mayor Protem, did I step on your question here?
No, not at all. So, Mr. Lynch, my question would be regarding color of the signage. I mean, you know, the blue and orange, was that, are you okay with that? Do you have other preferences? I, you know, as a property owner, I would imagine your first concern would be that, hey, the signage looks okay with your building and not the, you know, not necessarily worried about a school that's, you know, several off-ramps up the, up the freeway. Any comments?
We're open to most, any colors that staff would prefer that we do.
Okay.
So that was just kind of the, the pick of, as, as Mary Beth pointed out, it's the college district, so she wanted, they, staff wanted to keep it kind of in line with that.
Okay.
That, that was worth that. My partner, the landowner here, Mr. Jim Kyopoulos, will take over for me, if that's okay, unless you have other questions directly for me.
I think we're good right now.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilpersons, staff, personal thank you for all the efforts that you've gone through to allow this to come to fruition, as Tim indicated. I'm both the property owner and one-half partner in the billboard itself. As far as the colors, Councilman Dunlap, thank you for giving us a little bit of latitude to not have to come back to the city council. I personally have been pushing for something a little bit more akin to SC's colors.
Okay, on that, we're gonna shoot it down, so, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
None of that.
But yes, we are open to the color scheme. Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to address this item? Okay, seeing none, do we have Zoom callers on this?
I see no hands raised in Zoom, and I spoke slowly, and no one raised their hand in the meantime, so we are good with the Zoom.
Boy, things have changed. We'll bring the item back to the city council. I will close the public hearing, and we, staff was requested for additional clarification on a very wide-ranging term.
Thank you, I gotta address that. So, under state law, the city may, the city only may charge fees that are cost recovery. So typically, the city isn't going to know what the specific fees are in advance, like the fee specified, or something like this, which is simply the fee of reviewing the report. So if you have had a report with such a fee, that people have to reason that, that fees can only be cost.
Recovery. So it'll just be recovery of the staff's time in reviewing the report and any related expenses, typically, under state law.
Okay, so that is the best term of art to use in this sort of agreement?
Yes, that is what we believe.
It actually says reasonably, it says, shall pay city a reasonable fee in an amount that city may reasonably establish. So that's double, double the reasonable.
I guess justify would be the way to describe it, right? We'd need to cost justify that.
Correct, that is, that is acceptable.
You know, and perhaps, I mean, while I don't want to set up, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of establishing, you know, the need for them to come back to us year after year, but perhaps, I mean, perhaps there might be an opportunity to have just a year check-in to see that that is, that is in fact reasonable. I mean, and that could be, you know, potentially optional if they wanted to come back in a year, and we talk about it if they have a concern, but, you know, otherwise, I mean, I'm, you know, I think this is a great project, good for our city, and a great way to generate some additional revenue. Something I support.
Any other comments by council at this stage?
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion. Seconded by Councilman Zara, and with that, we'll have a roll call on this item.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye, as long as the Trojan colors are not there.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
And I believe, except for the USC fans, it's passed unanimously.
We may have to have a separate vote on the color issue, I guess. Congratulations, good work, and good work by staff as well. Appreciate this. This went much more smoothly than I anticipated, so.
And I do need to read the ordinance title. It is ordinance number, where am I, 30, 3,300, a nice even number. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Fullerton, California approving a development agreement for a freeway-oriented electronic billboard on property zone GC, general commercial located at 303 North Placentia Avenue.
And with that, we do have another item here, item number 10. Program extension to temporarily defer collection of specified development impact fees for certain developments.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Heather Allen with the Community and Economic Development Department, just a brief report, no PowerPoint this evening. Last year in May, the city council adopted a fee deferral program, which is an opportunity for a developer to, at the council's discretion, approve an agreement to defer identified fees, namely, traffic impact sanitation fee, park acquisition fee, and the general plan update fee to, prior to receiving final occupancy approvals. Normally, those fees are collected prior to building permit issuance. The fee referral program is an attempt to better match the financing that a developer obtains. Typically, when, when they are getting the building permits, they're on construction financing. This would allow the request to go closer towards property sale, use a different pot of money. This is at the request of an applicant, of a developer. You would enter into an agreement with terms to make sure that the city would not be out of any funds just deferring it. The fee program, free deferral program was set up for a 12-month period with any applications due June of 2021. We've not yet received any applications, but we do have indication that there are a few projects that are considering this opportunity in their pro forma, so we would request that the council extend the program for an additional year, and you have a resolution to do that. That would extend applications through June 1 of 2022.
Thank you, and I failed to mention, this too is a public hearing item. So prior to going to public comment, I see Councilmember Zara, were you? Oh, okay. If there are any other questions of staff at this point, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? Identify yourself.
And I see no hands raised in Zoom.
We may set a record for public hearings here tonight. Are there Zoom commenters? And with that, provided I've given them enough time on the calling side, I will close the public hearing. We'll bring the matter back to the city council.
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor. I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Zara, seconded by Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunlap.
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And now we're finished with public hearing items. We're at regular business right now. Item number 11, Fullerton Municipal Code Amendment relating to recreational vehicle parking, stopping, and standing. No presentation on this item, but we will have staff available as a resource. And with that, if there are no comments by the council, I will request public speakers. And seeing no one in the chamber, oh, there's one.
If you'd like to speak on this item, please come to the microphone and line up along the wall.
Hello, this is Tanya.
Oh, not yet on Zoom, but please raise your hand if you want to speak on this item in Zoom.
My name is Martina, and I am answering the phone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to speak on the subject of recreational vehicles and where they can park. Seems there was an ordinance a little while back that homeless people couldn't be ticketed unless there was a 24-hour shelter. I'm not sure what the difference is with homeless people that use their camper as a shelter. If they do not have a place, a safe place to park, and that doesn't mean like a regulated place, just a place where they could park and not be harassed, that they should not, under the same terms, be subjected to ticketing or confiscation until as such a place is provided. So I'm kind of confused if maybe there's a parallel between those issues. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist, on behalf of the homeless and residents also. I want to just kind of get some information, basically share some information, but get some information. The, the safe parking program, it was supposed to be for, for the homeless, and I don't see any reason why we still don't have that on behalf of the homeless, because we still have, the numbers state that we still have 400 homeless Fullerton, and I don't see, we built 150-bed shelter, but we still set up a safe parking program, and I don't understand why we can't continue that program. Up under the American Rescue Act funding, you guys are trying to use that funding for streets, but it clearly states, and this comes from our former city council member, Dormer, it states that this money is for, a large portion of that money is for small business assistance, small business assistance to households, renters, and owners, and it's for homeless. I have a friend here tonight, he has his camper towed, and that's what this funding is for, is to take care of the safe parking program and any other programs that has to do with homeless. You can't continue to rob the homeless people and tow- You can't continue to rob the homeless people and totally ignore them. When we get, when we got $30 million, and I sit up there and hear you guys say, oh, we're going to do this with the money, we're going to do it, I never heard you say what our former City Manager, Dorner, had said, that, and he wrote it here in the, in the agenda, that it was for the homeless, and to take care of any issues that had to do with any of the, you're totally ignoring the homeless population on behalf of the parking, the recreation parking. And also, that parking where you moved those campers from was in the, it wasn't in the SB 2 zone, but it was in industrial, which is right beside where we're supposed to park anyway. You have totally ignored that law. You're completely breaking the law by taking people's campers, specifically Jesse's back here. I would like to see someone work with him, refund him the money so he can go get his camper, and so that we can stay within the laws when it comes down to these type of things, and stop ignoring them. We have, again, I say, we received $16 million. We can get his camper out tonight on behalf of the parking program, and we can set up a parking program, and stop bullying the homeless completely. You gotta be kidding. You can't spend that money on other stuff. I sit up there and listen to you guys say, oh, I'm going to spend it on this. You can't do it. No, sir. No. You have to take, a percentage of that money goes directly to the homeless. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, how are you? My name is Jenny Matty. I've been a resident in Fullerton for 26 years. I did want to speak on this issue as well, and I just want to say that we kind of need to do better, Orange County in general, but Fullerton kind of needs to pave the way on doing better when it comes to homelessness. We need to stop criminalizing it. More often than not, we kind of push them out of sight, out of mind, and when we start to criminalize and take away and tow and figure out like where they can park or where they can't park, and towing it just because it just doesn't, it's an eyesore for people, I mean, that's just not okay in any way, shape, or form. We need to be doing better to support them. My father, who's bought a house in Fullerton, he lived in his car for 10, like five, 10 years, and he, that was just enough money for him to save money to buy a house in Fullerton. And the things that he's done for this community, because there was, he was in a situation where he wasn't criminalized for living in his car, I mean, it's hard enough that these people are homeless and that are struggling, especially in this day and age when you're, you can't even find a one-bedroom apartment here for under $1,800 in Fullerton. So I think we just need to do better and stop criminalizing the parking situation in all aspects here, and we need to rehabilitate these people back into our society as opposed to like criminalizing them. So I would appreciate it if you guys just did a little better job about taking care of, you know, the least of them. Like, that's all we're called to do is take care of the least of our community that needs our support, needs our time, and needs our help. So I'd appreciate it if you guys did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
One more time, good evening, Council. My name's Jessica Gennara, and in regards to the safe parking program, the controversy was going around with us in the homeless community, safe from who? Safe from the police, is what we came up with. We were being safe from you guys. One of the things about me not going to the safe parking program, I was not going to give up my Fourth Amendment rights of illegal search and seizure, being told, you have to sign a paper saying, we can search your vehicle at any time for whatever reason. No way. I, I worked all my life to have, be able to go where I wanted to go, do what I wanted to do, not to have somebody, you know, come and search my vehicle whenever they wanted. The other issue was that I was offered housing. The question from City Network was, how attached are you to your dog, and how long have you had your dog? What are you insinuating? Okay? Oh, and would you be willing to sell your truck and trailer? We'll get you a room in Stanton. Why are you moving people out of the city comfort zone? Where we, we, I mean, like, I grew up here. I apologize, I get upset very easy. The other issue was, why do I need to be told when to come home and when I couldn't leave? Because you are in a lockdown mode. You're in a, in a lockdown when you agreed to go to these programs. I like, I was in the process of trying to go back east, never been there, my sister's there, all of a sudden, next thing, boom. You guys came one day to take this, you failed, you came the next other day for another reason, you failed, four times you came to check my vehicle. Finally, you got something that stuck, okay? And I was told these were taken care of. I would really like to speak to somebody in depth. This has been going on for a long time. I've kept my mouth shut, I've stayed back and watched. When Kelly Thomas was, I mean, I had a shop in Fullerton, over there by the Armored Circle Store for years. So I've seen all the stuff go on, and I've seen you guys grind, and grind, and grind. So please, help us. I mean, I'm, I don't know where to go or to sleep tonight. Seriously. I mean, on the curb, like a bum, because that's what you guys have made me now. Thank you.
Seeing no more speakers on this item, do we have calls?
I see no hands raised in Zoom. So we are done with the public comments.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, I will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, for me, Ms. Fritzl wanted to say something about, to address a gentleman, I think, about where he can stay tonight?
Well, we could place him at 3535 Commonwealth tonight. You could have a warm bed and food and shower, so we can provide transportation tonight to the shelter if you'd like.
And then that shelter accepts pets as well, right?
It, it, yes, it does.
So we can take his, I'll give his wishes to.
It accepts one, one animal.
Okay. Okay, now, any member of the council have anything further to add?
Sure, I'm happy to move this item.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Jung.
I'll second.
And seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap, and we could do a roll call then.
Councilmember Jung. Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, and while I have the mic, if you'll indulge me, I will read the ordinance title. This is ordinance number 3301, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fullerton, California, amending Fullerton Municipal Code, Chapter 8.46, relating to recreational vehicle parking, stopping, and standing.
All right, with, with that, we are at our last item on the agenda this evening, which is item number 12. And that is developer selection to negotiate exclusive negotiation agreement for 1600 West Commonwealth Avenue Affordable Housing Development. And that would be Kelly Fritzl making the presentation on this item. Ms. Fritzl.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councils. Tonight, we are here to discuss 1600 Commonwealth, but I wanted to take a moment to discuss surplus property as the council aware Assembly Bill 1486, which was the Surplus Land Act, amended how cities could dispose of surplus land. And it actually expanded definitions and regulations, including what was surplus and local agency, agency use, and even the term good faith negotiations. I think they use good faith twice like ours. So, as you are rare, cities must declare property surplus and cannot sell for industrial or retail uses. A notice of availability has to be provided to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and be provided to those entities that are registered with the HCD. So that's just kind of giving you a little background. Wanted to explain why we are here. As you are rare, we declared the property surplus, we released the notice of availability, we released RFP in March, March 16th. We received five RFPs, and I will tell you, all five were outstanding, and so I think the RFP, RFP process really works, so. Next, attached is the project site. It is next to our CNG station in our city yard, Bask Avenue and Commonwealth Avenue. The property details, the whole site is 3.87 acres. That includes the CNG site, so it's about 2.25 acres undeveloped. It's zoned manufacturing general. We actually, the city acquired this property by Olson. Olson had proposed a project, and then there was a downturn in the economy. Once before in 2018, there was an exclusive negotiate, negotiation agreement to develop for permanent supportive housing, and that was never executed. So as we stated, we sent out a request for proposals. We wanted to make sure at the council's request, we really received proposals that we could define and look at the, what each one was offering. So, in alphabetical order, no preference, provided by staff, I'm going to give some general, I'm not going to read the entire slide for you, but CNC Development proposes 49 units. They, their rent, which AMI is average medium income, I'll explain that later, 30%, 50%, and 60%. They have 125 parking spaces, 2.55 per unit. They designed it for family, they could provide permanent supportive housing, and they recommended a veterans preference for 20% of the units, and wanted to focus on Fullerton ties. This is, you know, their pictures. Again, these are proposals as part of the RF, the E and A, we would, you know, nail everything down. Jamboree Housing provided 55 units. They provided rent at 30%, 40%, 45%, 50%, and 60% with 83 parking spaces, and this is also a family. They did do an alternative for seniors. A site evaluation. Meta Housing provided 62 units, one, two, and three bedrooms. Their AMI was 30, 30 to 50, and 51 to 80, 102 parking spaces, 1.65 spaces per unit. National Core provide, recommended 40, 59 units, one, two, three bedrooms also, rent at 30%, 40%, 50%, and 60%. 91 parking spaces, 1.54. Related, California, 55 units. They provided Studio 1, 2, and 3 bedrooms, rent at 30%, 45%, 50%, and 60%, 98 parking spaces. And this is some, so, I have to catch up to you, before we go into the recommended action, you know, a lot of people are saying, what, what does, what does affordability look like? You know, affordability levels, the average medium income is based on the Los Angeles, Orange County region. So the Fullerton medium income is $73,360. Orange County is $107,000. So we always look at a family of four, just, that's kind of what we do in the field. So, a family of four, for 30% medium is $40,350. 50% is 67,250. That's 50%, sorry, 60 is $80,700, and 80% is $107,550. So that's what you'd have to make to qualify in those areas. Based on a view of zip recruiter and the city's housing programs, because we have a lot of affordable housing, what is, what is affordable? So 30% are waiters and waitresses, are bank tellers, 50% are teachers, electricians, 60% are accountants, 80% are civil engineers, registers, nurses, dental hygienists, police and fire. So just to kind of talk about what affordability means. So also as part of the surplus land act, there's a couple of guidelines about what you must have. So the priority among offers, it has to be most affordable units, deepest level of affordability, and you may negotiate with all housing entities simultaneously, but during good faith negotiations, it's 90 days. So you can't prohibit residential use, you cannot reduce maximum density or lot coverage, and you cannot require additional design standards. So that's just kind of discussing what, what AMI is, you know, what is affordability, and unfortunately, the state has mandated that surplus land be focused towards either affordable housing or parkland. So tonight, we're recommending the City Council consider the five proposals and select a developer for staff to negotiate an exclusive negotiation agreement to bring back to the City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Fritzl. And as someone who's been here in the city for some time, it's nice to see this land being put to some constructive use. I don't know how many remember the mustard plant that was located there. That was the last actually effective use of that property, and that's quite a few years ago now. I don't know if you have that off the top of your head.
I've been shown pictures of it.
Okay. But, so, we are privileged to hear from these interested parties to make development there that will make constructive use of this area. And with that, are there any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, I've got a question, and maybe if you don't know this, Kelly, maybe the parties here know. What percentage of the acreage is set aside for parking for each project? Because I know that there's, you know, every proposal has a different amount of parking spaces, so just curious, what percentage of the acreage is set aside for parking?
That, I did not do that analysis. It was more how many parking stalls were provided, so that was kind of how I looked at it.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions by the council, I would invite public comment on this item.
Logan. So I just had a question regarding the affordability as well. I do believe that we should have more housing, for sure. We definitely need that in Southern California. But I think between choosing, between people, we kind of need to actively, like, think about what affordability, affordability actually is. I went to UCLA, I graduated from UCLA, I'm currently in my teaching credential program. For me to, when I get my first job, God willing, it'll be around $55,000 a year, $56,000 a year, which is nothing, what a teacher deserves. But with that.
Here, here.
Exactly. You were my math teacher, so you know. But that, for me alone, I can't afford to move into something like this. If it's $1,800, $2,000, I can't afford to raise a family and move into an apartment like that. So even with, with my fiance, me and him together, I literally need him. If he passes away, I'm screwed. So it's like, I need more affordable housing in Fullerton to where I don't need a roommate, or I can actually do it on my own, because I've done all the things that the United States tells us to do, go to school, get an education, but when I come out at the end, I'm doing everything I can, and I can't afford, like, to live here. And I want to live here, and I want to be here, this is where I grew up, I want my roots here. So if, when we're dealing with these contracts, I just plead you guys to really focus on getting more affordable housing, because I just looked at one today, and the list, the waiting list is a year in orange. It's one year to get into an affordable housing unit. And like, you can't even find anything sooner than that. So I strongly, strongly recommend that if these people are proposing to you guys, that they need to hold on their end of the bargain and actually come through with that affordable housing. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Fiancee here, I feel the sudden urge to speak. So I actually am also now venturing into the real estate market, I'm just now finishing my courses. So I am particularly interested to hear what everyone here has to say about how they're going to be able to help the community, not just in terms of the city and revenues and property taxes and so on, but also to the actual people who are living here, who want to live here, and who want to continue to build families here as well. And one thing I'd be particularly interested in, whether it be a question that you guys might be inspired to ask, or maybe just my own personal interest in what might be presented here today, is what measures and what aspects of practicality are they going to be able to do to make sure that the number that they're proposing are going to come to fruition? And that, as Councilman Silva said too, what measures are there going to be for parking? Because I know when we're looking at apartments as well, there can be some bottlenecking issues with parking measures, and that can also lead to traffic issues as well as far as in those areas coming into and out of the parking lots. So different measures like that, that can influence safety as well as the different traffic signals that might be involved with that as well. I'm not sure if that's the role of the developers, to be honest, I'm still learning. Or if that's the measure of the city, but hearing those safety measures as well as the ways in which we can uplift our community would be of great interest to me as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, excellent, Nancy. Major Councilman, well, I have the pleasure to partner with Compass Roads, and, which is Jamboree. And what they offer to the community is not just affordable housing. They offer an alternative, a hope for these families, because what they do, they work very hard to provide an education, and the families don't stay in those apartments for years, but they go and pursue a career, they better their lives, and they better their families. They offer different classes, we partner with them, we offer classes, you know, they always support us giving. They always support us giving classes for Sumba or we have for different classes for students. We have the app jam for technology. And I think whoever you guys choose to come to our city, it has to invest in the community and provide those services for our families, because that is what we want. We don't want just families staying because the rent is cheaper, but we want them various, you see, save their money and be able to buy a house or pursue a career. Or maybe they can have, you see, a better future for their end, their families in the long run, not just for a couple of years. And this is, I think, is the, what they have to do, all the developers that come to our city, to have in mind that we have a community that we're very active and we're going to demand from them, please, to help us and better our, the life of our families. I have, I know too, the hard work of Pathways of Hope, Jamboree especially, that is our partners for safety, creating neighborhood watch for reduced crime. And they're very active in the community, cleaning parks. That is what we want. Whoever's come to develop, it has to invest in the community too. We know there cannot be many apartments, but the units they have, they have to have with families. They want to better themselves, better the community and bring progress to our areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers at this stage, do we have Zoom callers?
We have one hand raised. Jane Reifer, can we please unmute?
Hello there. Good evening again, Jane Reifer. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. Actually, I'm very excited about this for a number of reasons. And one of them is, this is being done through a competitive process to award someone an ENA. I love this because several times recently, we've been awarding projects to people without any kind of competitive process. And I don't, I don't think the Surplus Land Act requires a competitive process, really. So I'm glad the city decided to do that. The, I call it the SLA for short. And it also allows kind of back room. I don't mean it, I don't mean it as a just pejorative, but it allows these things to be discussed in private and then brought to the public with the announced selection. But in this case, the city decided to go through a very public process and I just want to say how wonderful that is. Appreciate it very much. We all know that the afford levels, the amount of affordable housing available in Fullerton is not what we want it to be. It's at a crisis level. My understanding is that the Surplus Land Act requires that 25% of the units be affordable and at a certain level. I didn't have a chance to look at the legislation to see what it was, but I'd like to make sure that any of the that are selected meet that level of affordable units as their percentage. I do know that the land can be written down to a lower price and you would expect that if the land is written down to a lower price, that there would be a deeper level of affordability required in that case. So if, for instance, you choose Jamboree Housing, which I see is offering to pay $3 million and I believe the property is appraised at approximately $6 million. So if you would accept someone, I mean, that's a huge difference between $3 and $5 million that others are offering and $6 million that others are offering. Same with National Corps with Pathways of Hope. If you are allowing it to be purchased at a lower price, please require steeper or more deeper, I mean to say, affordable housing levels. I just think that's incumbent on the council and the public. Because if we don't want mass densification everywhere, we want every piece of, every lot that's set aside for affordable housing to carry its weight and meet RENA numbers and provide the best and most affordable housing possible. So please award this contract for the property, for the proposal that most provides that. And if people have to go back.
Thank you for your comment.
Respond again, that is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, we can accommodate that. How are you, Mr. Gamble?
Oh, very good, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, City Council, once again. Curtis Gamble, activist, behalf of the homeless. Affordable housing is great for Fullerton. And I think that this overall concept of having, I think it's about five people that are bidding on this, five companies. And that's what we, that's what we, you know, the city, the residents, we always wanted, wanted was competitive bidding on projects. You know, and not, not, not your friends and cousins and whoever, but you know, to give the best opportunity. Because the, the opportunity that we, we want is for the city not to, to do backroom deals. Because that's where we lose a lot. That's where Fullerton loses a lot. And the reason that we don't want the backroom deals and we want deals like this upfront deals, which gives the builders and everybody an opportunity, equal opportunity, which is fair to the whole community. I, I like the idea that we can see clearly now that we're, the city is going to make a profit from this and it's not just going to be a giveaway. I, I think it's anywhere from around, let's say, less $4 million, just to put a number on it. So they're going to make, the city is going to make a profit. And that's what this has always been about. And the other thing is, oh, just another type of affordable housing that's, that's out now, I think it's, it's shipping containers. You know, when we talk about the lower, lower housing, we, I think we did that over in Brenna Park. The former city manager, Donner, they did a project over there. And I think we should do more of those projects also in, in case something doesn't go right, even with this one, that we should have that as a, as a backup, shipping container homes. I, I want you guys to get familiar with that. That's going around the whole United States. And I don't want you to be the, the last one to find out and to, you know, to, to be profitable from, for that on behalf of the community and always financially and helping out the lower income people. So anyway, I'd just like to say, I'm very happy with this project. I look forward to it and we should do all our projects like this, given, again, given the builders an equal opportunity, given the residents an equal opportunity to participate. And I think you're going to have better projects that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll sneak up here if I may. My name is Patricia Whitaker. I'm with National Corps. And I'd like to mimic something that Kelly shared with us and that is that this has been a great process. All of the developers that are under consideration have produced thousands of excellent quality homes. And they've provided services to a full gamut of individuals and families and seniors and veterans. So there's a great opportunity for the city and they'll take it this evening in choosing one of these great developers. I would suggest that the range of income, the 30 to 80% and in the case of National Corps, 30 to 60% is because as we encourage upward mobility of residents, we want them to allow them to remain. Children earn school and they become seated within the community. So you need to have a whole range, although we all understand the plight of those most impoverished at the very lowest levels. So I think it's important to have that. National Corps, along with other developers you'll find, have a fuller range of services, all the way to help families with healthcare and childcare and career and education. That's one of the strengths of the affordable developers that have taken interest in the city of Fullerton, this RFP. And you'll also find that most of us never sell our projects. We're neighbors forever. We're part of the community and we enjoy building additional and other projects. And we encourage our residents to become part of this community asset. And we reach out to each of the neighborhoods and all of the surrounding uses. So with that, I'll yield the floor. We have other great developers to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Todd Cottle and I'm with CNC Development. And we just appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Would like to thank Kelly and the rest of the staff for the effort put into this RFP process. CNC Development's been in the business of providing affordable housing for approximately 30 years. Previously partnered with the city on two affordable developments, the Richmond Court Apartments and the Roberto Apartments. And really look at the opportunity to respond on 1600 West Commonwealth as, as the ability to continue that partnership throughout another site within the community. Our proposal includes family units, but then also has some preferences within that. If the city would like to proceed with those preferences, we have identified the opportunity to provide eight permanent supportive housing units, to provide a 20% preference for veterans and then also to provide a preference for those that live and work within the city of Fullerton. As we were looking at the site, a site that we're familiar with, understand that it does have certain site constraints, understand that there are certain sensitivities with the surrounding neighborhood and really put that, that effort as we put pen to paper in our design. Our design includes two and a half parking spaces per unit for the family units out there. We have the ability to increase our density currently right now at 49 units, if we were to lower that parking ratio and provide for additional units. But also wanted to make sure that we're able to park the demand onsite and not have impact or overflow into the surrounding community. And especially given the fact that we do not have the ability to park these units on Commonwealths. We wanted to make sure that we can park our own demand onsite and that as we're meeting with the neighbors, as we're having community meetings, meeting one-on-one with individuals, getting their feedback as we're designing it into our, our development, that we can really hold our head up high and say that from the initial beginning to 20, 30 years down the road, here's how this building's going to operate and here's how this affordable housing's going to serve the members of the community. Available to answer any additional questions, but thank you for, for having us here this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question if I may ask.
Sure.
Thank you for, for that and thank you for everyone for coming and, and speaking on this. You said, you mentioned that there, you can increase the number of units. How many units would you be able to go up to?
So we could increase it to 59 or 60 units if we drop that parking ratio to a 2.0 spaces per unit.
Okay. And that would change a little bit of the design as well?
It would change, it would add some units further back off of Commonwealth, so it wouldn't affect our elevation along Commonwealth that you would see. Those units would be interior to, to the, to the site out there. But really, as, you know, as we're looking at putting our, our parking ratio as we responded to the RFP, really a starting point is we work together in conjunction with city staff, with city council, as this site evolves, as, as the design progresses over, over the course of, of the entitlement process and through the exclusive negotiation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, what's more, so on those 10, 10 extra units, are they designated as one type in terms of 30%, 50%? Or can they be spread out among the various percentages?
That's a very good question. No, they would be spread out amongst, on a prorata basis, what the, what they're currently identified now. Those additional 10 units would get spread out through, through that ratio of the 30, the 50 and the 60% of AMI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Casey Burke and I'm president of Meta Housing Corporation. First, I really just like to thank you for this process. I think that you and your staff did an excellent job and I think you can see that in the results. You really have, I think, five excellent developers throughout the state. And any one of the projects are going to be fantastic for the community. Within our proposal, and I will keep my comments brief because I, I can't tell you anything that's not in my proposal already, but we were really trying to maximize the number of units and also really target really workforce family housing by pushing some of our units up to the 80% level. We tried to do this while still incorporating a high level of common space for resident services. We have a very robust program for, for onsite educational classes for children and, and health and wellness for adults as well as literacy classes, while also making our community available and our community space available to the residents, I mean, to the local community. One of our goals with our development would be to create a community space that could be utilized by the neighborhood and, and the residents at large to use as a public gathering space. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have. I make myself available. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just a question, on, on your allocation of units, the other developers are very precise on the number of units at the level. You've got a range, you know, 47 units between 51 and 80. What would be the breakdown of that? 60%, 50, 70? And same with the 30 to 40? I mean, 30 to 50, what would be your breakdown?
I can get you the exact breakdown. I think it would hopefully be in the proposal, but we'd be looking to do a pretty even distribution both amongst unit types and, and unit income.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to speak. If there's anyone else who's going to speak to this item, would you please line up next to the north wall here? Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, my name is Scott Reardon with Jamboree Housing. Thank you for this opportunity. As you well know, Jamboree is one of the top nonprofit developers of affordable housing throughout the state and really sort of the founding affordable developer in Orange County for over 30 years. We have a phenomenal development that we recently completed with your team and your former redevelopment agency, the Richmond, excuse me, the Compass Rose Community in Richmond. And as you've heard today, I think we've demonstrated very well our ability to reach out to the community, not just build buildings for people to live in, but provide the services and the community outreach. You know, we've teamed up with Cal State Fullerton, St. Jude, the Richmond Connect Program, Providing Services After School Program, Workforce Development, which is one of the areas we've talked about and moving our residents hopefully eventually up into for sale housing, Wellness Classes, Nutrition, Fitness, on and on and on. And we've really demonstrated that, we believe, in Fullerton as it is. And throughout the, the proposal, we, we, we think we, this presents basically a starting point for us to begin an outreach, as we did with our previous project, in reaching out to the community, the council, the staff and all the interested parties to really refine a plan that works for the community. We've provided to you in our proposal, three essential plans based on density, parking, open space. We're flexible. Our goals are to provide a, a development that works best for, for everybody. So you'll see that what you see in the plan is not exactly what we necessarily have to do. If you want more units, you talk about parking. Our parking is parked at SB 1818 levels, which is what the state allows for affordable housing. It gives us more open space and more amenities for our residents. One of our options goes four-story to get the more units that someone might want. But we're trying to be sensitive to that in our preferred plan at keeping it three-story for the neighbors. But we're very flexible. We're very open to working with you to get to that point, which is what we do in all the neighboring communities and throughout Orange County. I just want to say that by selecting Jamboree, we'll just continue to be a long-term partner with the city and the community. We never sell our projects. We, we have over 20,000 residents throughout the state from Sacramento down to San Diego and we retain our assets. So we really look forward to going to this next step with you, with Kelly and the staff, to enter into an ENA, which is really the beginning of this process, not so, not so much the end. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name's Colby Northridge. I'm with the Related Companies. First off, just wanted to say, we are very excited to be here, given the opportunity to work with our fellow competitors. And as you guys have heard, I think you have a very tough decision ahead of you and I don't think you can make a bad decision. You have five very experienced developers that have done a lot of work throughout California, specifically in, in Orange County. One thing I think that sets Related's proposal apart from the others is our, our design and how we've, we've scaled the buildings and their design to fit within the neighborhood and taking into special consideration the, the neighboring property owners. With that said, we have our architect, Tim Mustard, Mustard from TCA here. And just to give us a little rundown, give you guys a little bit more give us a little rundown, give you guys a little bit more on, on the design. And I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to our proposal. Nothing, nothing in there that you haven't seen, I imagine. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Tim.
Good evening, gentlemen. In a fit of irony, since my last name is Mustard, I hope that doesn't recluse me from the history of the site. That was, that was kind of funny. A couple of things I just want to highlight about our project, and again, my compliments to all the teams here. Likewise, we, we did study some options with consideration with surface parking. And as you all know, parking impacts density and open space. And so our design, we believe, is really unique in the sense that we put structured parking underneath the building so that we can allocate more open space for the residents' enjoyment. So you'll see things like a community garden, a fitness, a quarter, quarter-mile loop that allows for walking and exercise, a park for the kids to play, throw a frisbee, and then of course, a generous pool area as well. You may notice, may, may know us also by the fact that we designed the Amplify project down the street. And so, working with the planners here at the city, we wanted to make sure that we bring that, really to try to distill that, that unfortunate proposition that, you know, those people, the affordable housing project, looks different or looks like an affordable housing project. We took a lot of pride and a lot of opportunity to research the city, the history, the Spanish colonial architecture that is prevalent throughout the city, and incorporate that into our design that gives proper scale, gives proper mass, and really creates a, a classic elegance that will stand the test of time. And by also, just one last little note, by elevating the units up on top of the structured parking, that also gives us additional open space that we have programmed specifically for the residents to enjoy opportunities for picnicking and barbecuing and then also creating privacy for the adjacent residents or across Commonwealth as well. So I, I just want you to understand a little bit more about the context and how we spent a lot of time thinking about those things, thinking about the context, thinking about the constraints, but more importantly, turning those into opportunities for the future residents of the project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Silva?
No, I was gonna say, are we, can we bring it back or are we?
That'll be our last in-chamber speaker, and I didn't want to have a ping-pong match here back and forth with phone and speakers. Is there anything pending?
I do see one more hand raised for call-in user one. And you are unmuted. Go ahead, call-in user one.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's Maureen Milton, fifty-three year resident in the city of Fullerton, and I would like Kelly Fritzl and the city council to ask every one of these developers how many mobily-challenged and handicapped people they have on staff. If they don't have any on staff, why? Because if you're not handicapped, if you're not mobily-challenged, you don't understand the situation. And the fact that they say, oh, we follow all the rules for ADA, that is a bunch of hot air. I speak from experience. So if you could ask, present that to city council from the people that are looking to apply, I certainly would appreciate it and to consider it desperately, because if you don't, then you're not being fair to the mobily-challenged and the handicapped. And also, how many of these places are going to be on the ground floor? So those with walkers and such can have an easy exit and entrance into their apartment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see no more hands raised.
We'll bring the item back to council then for further discussion. And if I may, just real quickly, Ms. Fritzl, it is my understanding, and I'm glad that some speakers talked about this process, that we're trying to be fair-handed with the process. And we have some experienced groups here, developers, who know the business quite well. And I'm presuming they were asked to put their best foot forward and give us what they thought was the optimal solution for each, for each effort here on this location. Is that close?
That is correct. As part of the RFP, we asked them to give us their best proposal.
And that being the case, I understand, and it's been mentioned, that there's flexibility, but we really have to judge this primarily on the basis of what their best foot forward was on this. Would you concur?
I would completely concur.
Okay, so, and that was one other question that I had as well. Someone brought up, one of the speakers brought up whether or not what we select, whether the final product is going to somewhat resemble what we think at this stage, and whether you have any leverage on that.
Well, Kelly has no leverage, but we have a fantastic city council that has leverage. I, I do want to point out one item. Why I didn't focus on the amount that each person recommended is because there will have to be a fair market appraisal, value appraisal done, and depending on some of the different tax credits, they cannot exceed fair market value. So I put less, you know, motion into the value because it is going to be determined by an appraisal. In addition to that, it is going to be a residual receipt loan, so we'll get paid back on a yearly basis. So I just wanted to point that out because a lot of people were pointing out how much money we are going to receive upfront. It is on an annual basis.
And before I step aside here, I've, I've taken liberties being the chair to be able to ask you first, but there was one missing element in the grid here, which was the spaces per unit for Jamboree. And I did a calculation, one point five one is what I come up with. Is that correct?
Thank you, yes.
All right. And now, yes, Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to, to partly ask that, that question about this is what we have to judge it on, and I know they've talked about being flexible and making changes. And I believe CNC was the only one that listed it on that they could add ten more units. But with that said, what, you know, when this project went through, one of the things that I was looking at was the, the availability of affordable housing at all levels across. And I appreciate that most all of them, the highest percentage was sixty percent, because I think we do need to take into account that the median income in Orange County is very high. And there's a lot of our residents out there who don't make half that or don't make eighty percent of that, and that would be difficult to, to open this up. But with that said, I, I do, I do like the fact that a, a couple of them have a high number of units in that thirty to forty percent range. I think that, that'll help, you know, some of our residents get a leg up, get a step up, and then allow them to move forward. I have not them, their, their kids. And one of the things that I really, not, not, not the decisive factor, but I did like the fact that National Core is gonna, I guess, pay up one point five million upfront. And as you know, with the, with the tough times the city's having, one point five can do a lot of, of good in, in our budget. And, and I, and again, and I also like the fact that Related, their, their design, their, their spa, open space was really great. I, I like the, the design of having the parking underneath, so you do have a lot, you know, maybe not half of the property, but a good portion of the property has open space where, you know, you can go out there and gather and feel like you're getting away from your home for a while. And I know we all experienced that during this pandemic where we, we were lucky to get out into the open. It was a well-taken. So those are the, the, the things that I like. I, again, I hesitate to, to put a housing unit up to eighty percent. It just seems that we're going to be limiting residents. And, and I do like the fact that CNC included the option for eight permanent supportive housing. I know that, that's been a discussion in, in council before, and it, it would be great. They seem to offer the greatest amount of range in terms of potential residents there from, in terms of the income level, to veterans, to permanent supportive housing. And I know we have our recuperative center there that at the back end of that, if someone goes in there, the, at the back end of the recuperative center, there will be permanent supportive housing and put some of these residents in. So this, that, that's a plus for me. And so it's a tough choice. I, I, I like all the, you know, the items, but for, for me, the fact that we've got, you know, National has twenty-four units in the thirty to forty range, and they have forty-three total at fifty and below, and the fact that they're going to give us one point five, I, I would rank them rather high on that.
And could I clarify for one second?
Sure.
Thank you to Meta. I did look and they have no, no units at eighty percent. The highest they go is seventy percent.
And I was going to comment, Councilmember Silva, you and I are the longest-serving on the council currently. It's a rarity indeed that we didn't have neighboring property owners or renters coming to testify complaining or otherwise pointing out things that they didn't like. So what I think that speaks to is the fact that all of you did your jobs very well and that what you're proposing would be acceptable in almost every case. So we always take it very seriously, the neighboring properties, and what their reaction is going to be to this change, to the change in the local environment. So in my experience, this has almost never happened, right?
Well, no, it hasn't. And, but on the back end of that, once we select someone and they do the outreach, but I'm hoping that-
And this is especially important to me, this is in my district, right?
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I, I just thought that was a rarity, and you're all to be commended, I believe, at this stage. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council. Mr. Mayor, I do agree, this project is indeed in your district, sir, but by and large, the voters or the residents that will be aggressively concerned or in mind. So I do take this very seriously, along with the mayor. I, I did want to point out that I, you know, I should thank the mayor pro temp for his leadership in asking and requesting for this RFP. I think transparency is critical for our city to gain trust within our community and the, you know, residents that are impacted. So while I thank all the council members that joined us in doing so, I particularly want to thank the mayor pro temp for his leadership on that. That said, sir, I am incredibly fond of all of these projects. The Related project in regards to its architecture and it's so well thought out, their approach to the design, very impressive indeed. Meta Housing, I was very impressed with how many units they, they had and their willingness. The property sale value is one of the highest, not the highest. And obviously, we know what National Core's partner Pathways does and what Jamboree's done within the city and CNC as well. So we've got some decisions that are very difficult to head to this evening, but I did want to commend all of the companies that put in a proposal. I think this is hard to argue with any of them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's a testimony to competitive processes, I think. And Mayor Pro Tem, don't laugh.
You know, it's interesting, having listened to the comments made before me, you know, it's, it's interesting to hear, I guess, some of the, some of the common, common, common thoughts amongst council members. And I think to the point the mayor made about when this project came before, I think, a previous council, really disastrous situation, I think, in part, you know, through, you know, really the, if anything, it could have been the epitome of how not to do something. But, you know, the reality is it's what got us here, it's what got us to this point today, ultimately, to a situation where I think we've really had, you know, you know, really the best-in-class of local, regional, and also national developers competing against each other to put ultimately the best project forward for the city. And so, how do we quantify or qualify what that is? Well, of course, that, that can, that can vary depending on what is it that you're, that you're looking for. I think Councilmember Silva pointed out a desire for, you know, maybe a higher number of units at that lower median income threshold. And I, I think if I were to look at it, I would look for something that probably had, you know, more total units that, you know, that really, that maximized, maximized the site, but taking into account, you know, what it is that the, you know, taking into account the, the surrounding neighborhood. So still having ample parking spaces available, you know, while providing, you know, the most units possible for the site. And then, of course, the, also still providing the city with the greatest overall financial benefit. And so I think, yeah, there's a couple of things that we have to look for and think through as a council as we make this decision tonight. And I, I have to say, it's really a difficult decision because, you know, I, I don't think we could really go wrong, you know, with either of these five. And so, I think as we continue to deliberate, it would be interesting to see some of the other thoughts and suggestions that come up from, from the council up here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Zawra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all these proposals. Certainly, like my colleagues said, we have a very tough choice. It is like picking from the best of the best, and that's really not an easy task to, you know, to, to do. I'm just excited that we're going to have affordable housing, and I know that our regional assessment, housing needs assessment for the last cycle, we did not meet our affordable housing numbers. We did meet our, exceed, in fact, our market rate. So with this new cycle where we are challenged to, by the state to, to zone and, and over thirteen thousand housing units, I'm really encouraged that we are starting in, in a good way, in a positive way, that, to start with affordable housing. I think I, I'm, I'm excited to see some that have, each one, each developer comes in with unique designs and unique perspectives and experiences. I, I, I am partial, as people have, have gotten to know me and, and to, to read good quality designs, a design, I think, an architectural design that stands out, especially in areas like this, where has always been sort of industrial. I, I think, I think it's, it'll just really make this whole neighborhood, uplift the whole neighborhood. I love the idea of incorporating extra open space as well, because again, that area for the families who are going to live in these, these apartments, it's going to be a drive before they get anywhere to any open space. So I think this is a good thought, well-thought-out process. I really like the idea of the underground parking that Related had proposed. And I, I do have some concerns with, with some of the lower number of parking spaces or maybe some of the stacked parking proposals. Those are a little bit concerning for me because I think they take away a little bit of some of the aesthetics, but I'm sure those are things that could be worked out with the, with the, any developer. So really, it is, it is very difficult decision, and I think, I think we're, we're praising the process, but I think we, we're, we're going to have to come to a point where we're going to make a decision. So I'm looking forward to that. And I, I certainly have my favorites here, but I'm gonna defer until I hear from our mayor, and thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just got one clarifying question, Ms. Fritzl. On, on the financial terms, you said you listed, they have listed five million loan and three million, but that, the, the amount we're going to give for the property won't be known until we do the appraisal, correct?
Correct.
So like some-
And it depends on how each one is going to finance the project, and that's why I stated that.
Right. So when they say property sale of five or six million, that, that really, we won't know that until the appraisal and, and, and all the numbers are shaken out.
And all of the developers have done back-of-the-nack in appraisals, so this is based on what they think the appraisal will come out. They didn't pick the highest number to impressive. They actually did some research into it.
All right, thank you, thank you.
And, and with that, I guess, I, I could begin. There are different ways we could proceed at this point, but we're all going to have to come down with this election. I agree with the mayor pro temp that all of these would be serviceable. I think they would all have their, their pros and, and some cons necessarily. It's a bit of a sliding scale here in terms of some of the proposals being a little bit different. But to me, what's important at that site is you need to insulate the residents a little bit from both sides, from the railroad track and also from heavy traffic on Commonwealth. So to me, to have something that accomplishes that is, is helpful, whether or not it's the appearance, it's pleasing to the eye. Total number of units is important, need to maximize utilization of the site to the degree possible. Adequate parking is very important as well, and, and even allocation of different sorts of units. They've all addressed families in this, and so there are different types of families, so we do need some spread of, of possible units for that. A good mix of amenities that would add to what is probably the most important factor to me, which is livability. Anyone who's going to reside there, it needs to be a livable environment, whatever that means to people. To my tastes, as I looked and balanced and kind of weighed each of these, National Core just stood out from the rest a little bit. And that's not to deter from, from the other proposals, but I think that would be my primary choice at this stage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, and, and I was gonna chime in. One of the things I liked about National Core and that, leaning towards that is the fact, just a couple of numbers. They have the most units within the fifty percent and below range. They got forty-three. They have the most units within the thirty and forty percent range, which is twenty-four, which I think is great. Again, the fact that we're going to get cash upfront, that helps. So- to get cash upfront, that helps. So if you're willing, Mr. Mayor, I would move to go forward with National Core.
I'd be happy to provide a second on that. The only slightly subpar area was the parking spaces per unit, but still, they're within pretty close range of most of the others.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I may, on, for National Core. May I ask them to approach?
Sure.
I have a question for them. Your, thank you. Your design provides the least amount of open space or park space. Is this something, and also you have the least amount of, well, not the least amount of parking, but you have, I think, the stackable parking, which I-
We do.
Yeah, is this something that could be modified, as far as adding more park and amenities?
Of course, of course. We're finding that we have a very prolific resident services program, and so we often do parking that isn't utilized, is used for sports, for children, and activities. So the design, the internal design of the project, can certainly accommodate more green area and open space area and recreational opportunities for families and children.
Right, because that is something that is, I think, the least amount-
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's very important, I think, for that particular space, for me, anyway. And the other question, I just want to add that I think, I know Maureen, Ms. Milton, had asked about the mobily challenged and providing adequate amenities for the disabled folks. And I'm very sure, I think you would concur, that that is something that you'd take into consideration and make sure, and I'm very sure all the other ones will probably do that as well.
I think we all do. We take universal accessibility into consideration, and we have services that are especially geared towards some of our disabled individual. So I, we would definitely be ground floor space for our disabled individuals.
And one last question, if I may. Would you be amenable also for Fullerton family ties preference?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I have to put a caveat. It depends on other financing that's brought to the table. Sometimes there's prohibition-
Sure.
Or-
To the extent where you can lawfully, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Jung.
I see that the motion was made for National Core. They are in the top three for me, but they are not my number one, so I'd like to entertain a substitute motion for Meta Housing.
I would actually make that substitute motion, or second yours. Admittedly, and this is a tough decision or deliberation, but I had National Core ranked fifth out of the five. I actually had Meta and, you know, then Related kind of coming in the top two for a number of reasons, both related to the, I think, you know, the kind of the maximization of the site, but also the configuration, you know, the layout, and then, you know, of course, the intended financial impact to the city as well. We talk a lot about the area median income, the restrictions and things of that nature. I think the reality is, I mean, you know, we talked through some of these, you know, some of the income levels, the, you know, the people who earn that, you know, who earn that income, who, the positions that they hold here, whether they're, you know, Fullerton, whether they work in Fullerton or live in Fullerton, work elsewhere. And I think that, you know, this kind of spread between, you know, 30 to 60, 30 to 70, you know, really, that's a nuanced aspect of the business plan that I think the individual operator should be concerned with. And so I think that's why, you know, hey, I, you know, I'm judging more based on maximizing the site than, you know, hey, putting the more, you know, more of the number of units to that lower income threshold and what have you. But that's kind of my thoughts, and that's where I'm at on the issue.
Any further discussion before we-
Yeah, no, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I did like some of the designs of Meta, but the drawing factor for me was that they only offer 14 units below the 50 or below price range versus the other ones who are offering almost twice as much. So that was, that was a big point for me. We want to get a nice spread. And I know we talked about sometimes where even at the 70 or 80% level of the median income, who can afford that still? So that's why that didn't rate as high for me. So, you know, I think National Core did the best job with the numbers.
Yeah, and- Well, I think it's fine where we're landing on this, because we had a bunch of unanimous votes all night, and these are all very close in terms of consideration. So even when I talk maximizing the site, National, 59 units, Meta, 62 units, they're pretty much in the same neighborhood there. So, yeah, I guess it just comes down to a little bit of preference, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to Meta, I just wanted to point out one thing that was a concern for me as well, which is the units, there's a heavy, they seem to be heavy on the one bedroom, so you've got 29 units on the one bedroom, and then the two bedroom, 17, and the three bedroom, 16. So if we're trying to do something for family-oriented housing, then one bedrooms would be a little bit of a, you know, tight spot for a family of four, if that's kind of the average that we're looking for. So that was, that put Meta for me, not, you know, not in the top three, unfortunately. It made the top five for me. But it certainly has a lot of other things to offer, but yeah, the, you know, that particular aspect, and the fact that they go up to the 70% still, I would have seen, liked to see a little bit on the lower end of the, of that percentage. So I wouldn't be able to support that at this point. My favorite were the ones that really were somewhat geared towards the design and the open space, so I was very partial to Related. CNC was also, made my top three because of the ability to increase the number of units to get to where we want. And then they had that open space and that quality, the design that I personally liked. But certainly, National Core is up there because they also provide additional services and amenities. And my only concern with them is that they also are lacking on the open space, but as we heard the, their explanation, that that could be modified. But they also do have 28 unit, one bedroom units, and I'm hoping that these are all things that could be addressed if this is where the council goes, but.
Actually, one question I did have. You know, I did notice, Director Fritzl, if you look at the grid, there's some discrepancies between the number of units density and then the affordability level numbers. And so I think I noted, you know, you got 48 on the affordability levels, and then, what, 49 total units for CNC. So, and then I think Jamboree had 55, and then 54. Meta, I think, was 62 and 61, so.
Because the, everyone has an onsite manager, so that's-
Oh, gotcha. So are they excluding that then from the, okay.
Because that would be at fair market rent, so it wouldn't be one of the affordable units.
Okay.
I think I put that in the staff report. I probably should have put noted on the matrix also.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Jung, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Related was number two for me, and I would disagree respectfully with our councilperson about one-bedroom apartments or one-bedroom homes, one-bedroom units. When I started my family, I didn't need more than one bedroom. So I prefer that. I think for those that are young in our community, that's what's required to keep our community younger, vibrant, saving. So I would tend to disagree that the calculus for one bedroom certainly needs to be met, and I appreciate both National Core and Meta Housing doing that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And if there's nothing else, we will take that substitute motion first. Do you have that clearly, Madam Clerk?
Yes, this is the one for Meta Housing. Okay. Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Nay.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker.
No.
And it fails two to three. And then shall we go to the original motion, which is the National, something I scribbled, National Core. Councilmember Jung.
No.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap.
No.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
So this one passes three to two.
I want to congratulate the prevailing party here, but I also want to congratulate the other four of you for making this an exceedingly difficult choice. And we do appreciate the time and effort you've put into this. And so thank you very much with that. And that concludes our-
Mr. Mayor, a few things, if I may, sir, before we conclude.
Sure.
I wanted to give some direction to our staff. JP 23, I think the sheer amount of incidents, either by inexperienced staff or the reckless patrons that are attending nightly events, has created a basic public nuisance concern. So I would propose an evaluation of their permit by planning, commission, and staff to address what may become a significant public safety issue. I have a Pearl Street parking concern, enforcement of the no parking and towing. We had a resident threatened over parking violations. I want to take it out of the hands of our citizens who risk altercation and direct it back to enforcement so we could actively enforce parking on Pearl Street. The UP Park in the right of way, I didn't see the RFP on the next July agenda. I'd want to make sure that that gets done. And one final reminder of the public, active transportation survey on the city website, downtown on the go, please do visit and take the survey, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So I'll second the JP 23 item.
Thank you. And the UP Park?
Well, I actually-
Is it on? It doesn't require a second. I was just asking if that's going to be on the agenda, Mr. City Manager. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and-
Yes, it will be on for the park, sorry.
Well, Councilmember Jung, if I may, I'm going to be out of town the next meeting, so I would like to see if we can have that RFP item in August, where I can be present to discuss that. That was the concern, that I was hoping that something as big as this, could we have all five council members on the dais. So if we can extend it to the first meeting in August, I would appreciate that.
I'm happy to do that for you, sir.
And with that, we will adjourn for this evening until our next regularly scheduled city council meeting on July 20th.
Where are you going?
And I just want to add that we need to keep all those family members in mind in Florida with the disaster that happened, and certainly send our concerns their way. And with that, we are adjourned.